We're going to start the August fifteenth meeting of the Tufton Borough Planning Board. Before we get started, does anybody have any questions about proceedings or general planning board questions? Or just any question really? Alright, great. Before we get started, let's vote on the minutes. Does anybody have any changes?
I did. Okay, we don't know who it is. Dennis, what kind of his name is the president of Pier Nineteen Association?
Go on.
What's his name, Gobin?
Gobin. Gobin said that I was in conflict of interest and as well as you weren't too.
I added that.
Okay.
I had another change there.
Page two?
Yeah, this would be page two. He stated there are no boat slubs available at Pier Nineteen. Stated that there are boat slubs reserved for the New Hampshire Fish and Game Department and Fire Department. And what he actually said was that there are spaces reserved for swing room for their boats as they approach the town at a house not at the Pier Nineteen condo association. And then like Tony said, he said that I was conflicted because someone could rent something from me on the outer room if it was a brute. The other change I had was Ron Albert on page three. It's written, "Ron Albert reviewed the board's mission statement and asked how such a state within the board's factored into the board's decision." And his statement was, "Is it all facts and figures?" That wasn't listed. That wasn't mine. Other than that, it was four eight, you have one. There were a lot of minutes.
You good with it?
Yeah, that was all I thought. Go judge anything?
No.
Have a motion to approve the minutes with the changes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. First appointment is, forgive me if I don't pronounce this right, Patricia Porch?
Yep.
Alright, great. Tax map fifty-five dash two dash thirteen is a site plan review for barn sale, formal submission and public hearing. And what I'll ask you to do is come up and just give us a description of what you're doing. That's about it.
Okay.
You good?
Okay.
Alright.
You want me to come up?
You don't have to, you can sit right there.
So it's basically like a yard sale in the barn? It's a barn sale.
Okay.
I've offered parking on the side of my driveway. And also the ladies from the Grange had come up and offered their parking there at the Grange, which is right next to it.
Yep. So basically you have, that used to be a pottery studio. Do I have the right place?
No.
Oh wow.
I don't think so. No, that was... When we bought it, it was in pretty rough shape. I don't think there's anything...
Okay, yeah, never mind. I see. I'm sorry, I have my places wrong. Okay.
You're talking about here?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you're open to run ongoing business out of the barn, correct?
Um, yeah, for now, I guess.
See, it's not a full time...
It's not like a park and stone type thing, which is what I hope.
I can't place it.
It's dying late.
It's across the street from the general store.
It's not the street from the general store.
Yeah, this way, a few lots.
I still can't place it, but...
Do you know where the Grange is?
Yep.
Right next door. If you're standing on the front lawn looking at the Grange running...
You must keep it pretty neat and tidy because I can't remember it.
Yes.
Alright.
So we were told to show up here just so that we can make it clear what we're doing and
if there was any issues with the butters and... Yep. Let me see, so this, if I remember right, is the neighborhood business zone.
Right.
Alright, so this is a permitted use, which would be retail sales to consumer services. You'd be allowed a maximum of five thousand square feet underneath the zoning rules as there were zoning laws as they were written. Parking, I think, is listed at... It's about five cars per a thousand square feet in the site plan review regulations. This isn't a big use. We're trying to try and turn this into a production.
Right, right.
How many square feet do you estimate the barn as?
In that barn? I would say maybe a thousand?
Maybe?
Probably not even a thousand.
I would imagine you could fit five cars in the driveway without any issue.
Yes.
It would also be a permitted use under a home occupation. So it's kind of doubly permitted in a way.
Right.
So... Do you have an outside display of product at all, which would be allowed in a business zone, not allowed in a home occupation?
So I do pull things out of the barn and set it out. Kind of catches people's attention.
Okay.
And then I put it back away at the end of the day.
Okay. Do you have any problem if we just make a condition that at the end of the day, this stuff goes out of the barn?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, we don't want to get rained on anyways.
It's permitted under a neighborhood business zone to have product outside.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know... What other questions does anyone have?
So just see, the barn itself, what's the condition of the barn?
Oh, awesome condition.
Very good condition, yeah.
So safety wise?
Yeah.
People coming in and out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done, you guys have lived in this town for years, you probably remember what that house looked like when we bought it. We've done a lot.
With about ten years ago?
No, four then.
We just bought it.
Three years ago?
We're going on break this year.
Yeah, we've been on the market some time back.
Yeah. But we had, you know, the house inspected, we had the barn inspected, and the inspector noted that it was probably one of the best old barns he had seen with the condition of it.
Good, save it.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely.
There's only one other thing that you would need, and this is just because it's something we've requested of other applicants when they have a home occupation in a neighborhood business zone. And because you're on Middle Road, you will have to get a driveway change of use permit, which is issued by the state, it's not a big deal to get.
Okay.
Jack can probably help you fill out that application. If Jack can't, I will. It's just, what it does is it lets the state know that it's, there's a commercial business happening here as well as a residential. And it kind of covers your own butt in case somebody pulls up and something happens.
Okay.
Because it's a neighborhood business zone, you're also entitled to signage if you want. There is a maximum, but if you wanted that, you would have to display it on the plan where you would want it.
Oh, okay.
So just so you're aware, you are allowed that. And then there's a couple other things that you'll have to put on the plan to make it legal. They're not very complicated, but you would need a north arrow. So, to get where this is more, a signature block. The zoning district has to be depicted on the plan, so it would just be listed as NHB, and you have to put a scale on the plan, so...
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, we can figure that out.
Does anyone have any questions?
The only thing on the signs, I think Jack has to permit you sign also, of course you're done.
Yep.
We just have, she uses a small sign that she just takes out of...
I just put a barn sale sign out.
There's regulations on the signs.
Okay.
Jack will...
Oh yeah, small.
Okay. So to make a long story short, you're actually entitled to a larger sign under the zoning if you wanted one.
Okay.
But you do have to pull a permit to do it, and you want it depicted where it is on the plan.
Okay.
And I do that here?
With Jack, yep. And you'll need a DOT driveway change of use permit.
Right.
Which again is non-aberber. If any, if no one has anything else, I would like to make a motion to approve with the following conditions. I see nothing good concerns back there?
No, we don't.
Are we doing a public hearing on this?
Oh yes, I'm sorry.
So you have to accept jurisdiction?
You're correct, I'm sorry. You have reviewed the application and the application is complete. Can I have a motion to assume jurisdiction of the application?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would any member of the public like to speak about the application? No one? Can I have a motion to close the public session?
Uh, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one has any objections. Can I have a motion to approve the application with the following conditions? One is a DOT driveway change of use permit. A revision of the site plan to include a north arrow, a signature block, the zoning district, and a scale. And the last condition is that display items be brought in at night.
And the conditions to comply with the signage if they choose to.
They won't be able to get a sign permit without it, that's what kind of written on it.
No, a bigger one.
Maybe still be a... I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
So can we take that list with us or...
Yep, I'm gonna give you this.
Okay.
And you're gonna need these are the changes you're going to leave to this right here. And the last condition was just...
Okay.
And who would I need to check with? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yep, see you.
Do you guys want to take these, then you can actually...
Oh, okay. Right, right on.
Yep, right.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Next up, Ed and Melvin, tax map sixteen dash two dash twenty, boundary line adjustment, formal submission and public hearing. This should look familiar to everybody because this was a boundary line adjustment that was done a while ago, and if I remember right, the surveyor put something in the wrong spot. And basically, the line, still anyone's aware, was here and needs to be moved here.
To the darkened line is the line that's going to.
Correct.
Okay, so it's being moved from the incorrect line.
And originally, there was a little lot down here, if I remember right. And the idea was to just split the lot, fix the line, and somebody made a mathematical move. But it was legally done, so we have to legally redo it. And I apologize for that hassle, but someday your grandchildren will thank you. Does anybody have any? Oh, so I'm sorry. Can we review the application and the application is complete? Can I have a motion to accept your suggestion of approving the application?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Would you guys, do you guys want to speak about it at all?
Anything else we have to do?
No, we looked at it, you had, looks great.
We spent a lot of time looking at this.
Yes.
Huge amount of time machines, there's a way we could avoid you going through this pain that you had, but the law wouldn't permit it.
Right.
It wouldn't, so...
Well, the guy made an error, that's...
Yeah.
Unfortunately, he made a new error and then it was legally renewed.
That was, that's the real kicker. It's in the deed, it's...
Right.
You gotta undo it, just see if we should change it, so that we'll do this.
Alright. I have a motion to open the public session.
Yes, we're all set.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? No? I have a motion to close the public session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the boundary line adjustment as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Says until next time. Congratulations.
Keep going till you get it right.
Do you copy these?
Okay, we have four, give them two.
We have four.
Can you have my copies on?
So you're thinking of doing that again?
I didn't have a choice.
Alright, next up on the agenda, third-party engineering firm candidates. For anyone who's a modeler, we have a subdivision on Farm Island that is going to require a third-party engineering review. Two companies we would normally use, White Mountain Survey is doing a review for Camp Belknap, was one of the butters. Norway Plains has deferred. That caused us to receive a list of engineering firms from, Norway Plains had some recommendations, and we took, I think, another engineering firm we've done some work with. And Gary was going out and talking to them and interviewing them and seeing who was the best map. So with that, Gary, what do you got?
We're still in process. At the end, they sent me a note of one, two, three, four, five different firms.
Okay.
The potentials here. I reviewed all those firms. And the top three on those firms, I pretty much ruled them out. What I did, I did website search on all these guys, spent a lot of time. Boston O'Neill, Egan Bond, and Underwood Engineering. Basically, we really don't do municipal, okay, planning boards. They're big, big firms that do civil engineering, bridges, buildings, government buildings. I mean, and they're very large. They're capable, but you will be lost with them, really would. So it went down to DeBois and King, Horizon Engineering, and then I added a couple people also through other research to see where we stood, so... Right now, before I started really dealing with these people on the phone, I came up with a list of our requirements. And those requirements, one, if we're looking for a civil engineer, we were looking for a land surveyor, both licensed in state of New Hampshire. Looking for a septic design and subsurface disposal system licensed firm, experienced doing feasibility studies, which were wetlands, soil scientists, site plan reviews, shoreline permitting with complete knowledge of Department of Environmental Service, DES, New Hampshire, regulatory environmental services, and extensive knowledge of New Hampshire shoreline water quality protection. Okay? And obviously, they have to read our ordinance and subdivision regulations and understand it. So, and I also noted that they'd be receiving plans at some point. And in those plans, they were receiving all the public data information that was put on us at the past few meetings. And it included several key items in here, but not limited to. So everything would go to them, so they would understand exactly what they're looking at. Alright, so when I talked to these guys, I was extremely upfront with them about what the data was so they could see it, understand it, and come back with proposals. So, DeBois and King, we went to, I had to go to their corporate office, they're a fairly large company too, not as big as these other guys, but they've got ten offices. So, you know, I had to go up to their corporate, explain what I was looking for. Eventually got a phone call back from the Laconia office. The Laconia office is a commercial operation. They don't do municipal. Bedford firm does, but their project manager was really quite nice. He understood the situation, went through it with them. They don't have, they're not a licensed septic design company, they're not licensed in it. Alright, so they have a couple holes. When I looked at this, I numbered everything down here as one through eight, right down the side, and they were missing a couple of those numbers. However, they go to outside sources and they sub things out. But after they huddled on it, they came back and said that they declined to even make a... to even deal with it. So they felt that they're too busy at this time, they don't have, they didn't have the knowledge so much of our subdivision plans, you know, and they also had some other issues because of what we were requesting here, saying, so we don't have it. So basically, they don't want to touch it. Alright, and I will say this, that they researched this before they called me. So they've been on our website, they've been through it. So you kind of have a little situation like we did with our other firm that said no to it. I went to Horizon Engineering. Horizon Engineering has approximately thirty employees with four locations. The main office is Littleton, New Hampshire. I spoke with their manager, their office manager. Office manager, by the way, is licensed in several areas of septic design and other things, she's pretty sharp. They have all the information, I've sent them this, they've been on the website now. They'll have a proposal for us next week, okay? I went to another company called Jones and Beach Engineering. They were out of Stratton, New Hampshire. Great website, they had everything we needed. The other problem is they don't return calls. So, they're gone at this point. So I called them several times, a little bit excited to think that they maybe could do something. The last firm I went to was North Point Engineering, and I spoke to Kevin Leonard, their principal engineer there. The only item of requirement that didn't have was Lancer Bear, so I said to him, "That's fine, how would you deal with it?" It was just to explain how you would deal with it, you're gonna sub it out, alright? But since he's a principal engineer, a lot of our documents tell us that we can deal with engineers for that, because they have a good understanding. So I said, "Just list your professional understanding of it," and so forth. They had everything else involved. They're out of Concord, they have another office, I might get Bedford. Okay, they're probably about fifteen people in there, so they have all the rest, they have all the scientists and so on and so forth. So I've sent him all the data also, this note, and I've directed him to our website, explained the situation to him, and he's going to look to have a proposal back to us next week also. So we're sitting with two people right now with proposals coming in.
North Point's a company that...
North Point's done work for Tufton Borough. They did the library, a lot of things to do with the library.
But they did the school, they were the, ran the high school and middle school expansion.
Actually, I like Kevin, he's very nice. And the other firm up in Littleton, Horizons, they pretty much got their, they've been quick to respond, and they know what they're looking at, so both these guys did. But you have, any other things about them with us? Everything went well?
But, you know, we've had good experience with Horizons.
Yeah, I noticed we were on Tufton Borough, it was on their website, but...
So I've used them for some fairly heavy permitting, and they make it fairly simple. They seem to be, I'm all pretty sure.
Yeah, we emailed back and forth about three times today and stuff, and explaining how it would really work, and so...
They are used to some fairly hot potatoes still. They've dealt with some...
That was pretty evident when I talked to people, how they felt, because, you know, I told them, you know, this is a pretty warm subject, it's very controversial at this point. So, and that's when these guys went on the website, one guy backed out, of course you have T-Trust Company backing out, so... And I think it's not a bad thing to go outside of our territory.
No, I think that's actually a good thing, because they're completely impartial.
Yeah. So even in the future, as I said, we may use you in the future, you know, so...
Actually, I was kind of thinking about that, you know, as we get more applications, which we seem to have, and as we have more third-party reviews, it may not be a bad idea to look at outside, you know, well outside the area.
Well, that's basically how I approached it too. I said, "We're potentially looking for another party to work with us in the future." You know, we're gonna stay outside of territory, and they both kind of agreed, they know where I was coming from on the subject, so... They're both good firms, and we'll have something next week on it.
Please. Ben, do you have any experience with either of those?
Fifth.
Line.
Next week we'll have, but the fifth is our meeting, so we'll pull a hub on this, just part of it.
Okay.
So I wanted everybody here to understand where we were with it and the information. So, you know, we've got two good guys coming in, they're both quite capable, they do what we needed to do. And then you have other things you need to deal with, I think, like impact studies and stuff, they're not necessarily impact study guys.
I'm sure that if we need to, they know somebody, but...
Yeah, so... I did query that with them, so... So that's where we stand with them right now, and...
Well, I've always been along the wall with Horizons, I think the firm has, myself. But in case Horizons wasn't interested in doing it, I have no problem working on engineering either.
I talked with her office manager, we emailed each other today, and she confirmed that she has something, I mean, next week probably, so...
We're both on the ball.
Yeah, they're both on the ball. And I told them, "Get updated information after the fifth, when we see the plans." So, and one of these people commented about White Mountain stuff also, and I said, "That stuff will get fixed," and I said, "Yeah." You know, so you'll see cleaner plans. There'll be less to point out on those plans, most likely.
Yeah, normally things like that are filtered out on preliminaries, but they didn't do a preliminary, so they don't get filtered out.
Who's doing engineering for the buyers?
New Hampshire Land Survey.
Yeah, they're...
They're in Southwood or something, right?
Yeah, in Northwoods.
Oh, Northwood, yeah.
You know, let's see, two surveys on the property are different. On their properties, one is one more acre than the other. So there's an acre differential between the pass surveyor and these guys, which is kind of interesting, I looked at that.
That could easily depend on how we, what they take for segments of the shoreline.
That was, it was basically a differentiation.
It's the water table.
Oh, well, that too, but that's what I mean, it's, when you're dealing with the water.
High water.
Yeah, highway, it depends where they take high water.
Mark, they didn't use the hundred-year flood on it, I don't believe, they used another, and I think it's gonna come up one point four feet, and it's gonna take those wetlands and move them quite a bit, it's gonna eliminate an acre probably.
I can tell you that, I mean, I haven't walked the entire way around that island, because ninety-nine percent of that shoreline is about rocks, about four feet tall, it's probably not gonna move it a substantial amount, but it will certainly move it some.
Yeah. It'll be interesting to look at the new.
Yep.
How many acres is the whole thing?
Thirteen. Twenty-one, I think.
Twenty-one.
Building that bought, so...
It's a good size island.
So about, so they're doing one acre, a hundred and fifty feet?
That was what they came for.
Thirteen lots on thirteen acres, thirteen and a half acres of water.
You won't get that many, I was trying to get...
It looks like they...
No, excuse me, they were trying to get twelve lots.
Twelve.
Out of thirteen point four.
Much well into the interview?
Not a lot.
It's pretty who you ask, depends on who you ask.
Yeah, and I can tell you that, I mean, I walked all over it, and whoever flagged the wetlands did a very good job. It was, it was well flagged, and I mean, he flagged some stuff that I wouldn't have recognized as well.
Actually, just talking about the survey, I've been told, anyway, yesterday, Carol, who was the representative buyer, says all the pins had been removed by somebody randomly. So they have to go out there and read, either research or read wherever they have...
The pins are just set, somebody... You mean, the pins they just sat, somebody did? Don't do that twice, that's a felony.
And actually said that?
Yeah, that's a felony. You wanna solve that problem, put a few trail cameras up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't do that, you shouldn't do that.
There probably are.
It's one thing to knock them, I mean, when we're building roads and the rest of them, we knock them down, but it's a platted survey, we put, those can be put back in easily, because it's a platted survey, but it's still a felony, you don't want to do that.
Yeah, it's a few more hours.
Yeah, the problem is, if you get ancient ones, those are the ones that, you can't, there's no, there's no math to put those back in place, but those are the ones, so in other words, if you're out in the woods somewhere, don't go start pulling boundary pins, because you can't put them back in again, you know what I mean, they might be from a hundred and six years ago.
Pins?
That's what she told me, that's what she was telling me.
Maybe a pin in the lot seems a little bit...
Normally, that doesn't happen, so...
No.
But maybe, maybe they're talking about boundary line, the pins that were put in for the original subdivision that provided the...
I'm really surprised, they sat on this for forty years, on the island, the family guys.
How many?
Fifty, sixty, I don't know.
Yeah, they've been there a hundred...
It doesn't look like anything's happened there, and...
It hasn't. Oh, it hasn't?
I mean, it doesn't look like anyone's...
They started in the eighties, I mean, there was a plan kicking around when I was chairman, back in the eighties sometime.
Yeah, that's the, that's the plan, I was talking about the acres.
Yeah, they couldn't, they couldn't, they weren't satisfied, I think the price was about the same or more back in the eighties, is it, was it cost 1.4 million or something?
One point five, one point four nine five.
Yeah, I mean, that was the same price thirty years ago, it would've been worth a little bit more, it was crazy numbers, but they wouldn't do it.
It's a, it's a beautiful place.
Northwood. And Bellmount's gonna take some of it?
Yeah, every ounce is seven point three.
It's all about, I didn't know that they sold it back then.
Ten years ago.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't around it, I listened. They should've bought the whole thing.
That's what we said to them.
We wouldn't be here.
When they bought, what I was told, the reason they bought, what they did is, that's all they could afford to buy, was seven acres.
Seriously?
At the time. Now guess what, they found the money and buy the rest of it.
Yeah. Did they? To go buy it?
Well, they can, because Randy Owens has got an agreement.
I'm sure they could buy it for three and a half or four million.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if I was doing that and somebody offered me three million, they'd own it in about ten seconds.
Right.
Actually, probably two million, that'd be the quickest half a million dollars you ever made.
And Winchester's, I feel they have hope.
Yes.
They wanted their money last month.
Yeah, too much.
Yeah, it might be next summer.
Maybe.
So all of those people should be taking up a collection of your, because Winchester's, in my opinion.
Yeah.
No, I'm real excited, I'm a butter, I look right at it, I'll go back tonight, I'll look right at it, five, six houses on that line, but I'm assuming that when a house lot goes up for sale, all of those people that speak are gonna buy a house lot and leave it in its natural state.
Right.
I mean, that's how strongly they feel. They want to use somebody else's money to do it. Well, I don't care whose money, but I'm just saying that, and every one of those people that complained, they own a quarter of an acre or a third of an acre.
Yeah, that's right.
Not an acre.
That's right, and I've heard that when...
A lot's only nine tenths of an acre.
When the zoning was first done, that, for that area that was one acre zoning, there was a lot of pushback, because people thought that was way too much, that was way too big a lot, you were pricing people out of the market, and of course, you had all these existing lots that were smaller, just think of that, we're at acre zoning now.
Back in the eighties.
Yeah.
I've got mine, let's close the door behind me.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, one of the things that I've thought, is you can't let these people stand up talking about this thing going away, is, alright, so, this one's gone, but look around, is there something else that's the way it is, that you'd like it to be the way it is? And if it is, now's the time to start getting together with your friends and neighbors and seeing what you can do to buy it and keep it the way it is, because once somebody else buys it, they're gonna do with it as, as they see fit.
Yeah, I know, people fail to understand that you still have private property rights, they, you know, again, zoning's written to, this is an administrative board, it's not a judicial board, and people, it's hard to convince people of that. And there's been many hearings in the past thirty years when I was doing it, that you have to get it across that, listen, these people have rights to use their land, you know, unfortunately, you're in the life of the dog.
We have a pretty long list of rules that people have to comply with. If you comply with the rules, then...
Yeah, it's more of a visual thing, I mean, if houses were so bad, we all should be dead, we spend a half of our lives in them, okay? And again, you gotta look at seasonal use, you gotta be real practical, I mean, it sounds terrible, twelve houses are gonna be built, but there's thousands of houses or millions of houses all over the world, and the new septic regs, even on the island, it's light seasonal use typically, you know, and if you look at a little bit of context, the islands don't get overused, you know, nine months of the year or six months of the year, you can barely get there, so...
Well, if, if we believe that the state's process with septic design approval is a good one, and what I would argue is, any ten brand-new houses with brand-new septic systems will create less of a problem in the lake than any ten existing ones.
A hundred percent.
Because...
That's by a fact, by factors.
Right, exactly. And that's assuming that the ten that are already have septic systems, we know a lot of those don't.
Well, that's most of that stuff out there, doesn't, no, I don't...
Well, with that, we'll move on to the planning board operating budget.
Oh, yeah, sure, this can go around. So, I guess, I dug up the Spiderwood, so, dusted these things off. What this is, is, this is Remington and Winchester, this is the original plan, so the original plan was Brown Engineering, okay, Kent Brown, and then, he, this was done in two thousand and five, I think, originally, he had a computer crash and he lost the digital plan.
Okay.
So what he did is, Kent Brown went back out and he did a full survey.
First done.
Yep. Oh, what is this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so what we're doing, this is Mountain Shadows Drive.
Right.
This is Lindsey, yeah, Winchester and Remington of the bottom line, Mountain Shadows subdivision.
Okay.
We had, when we built the roads for Winchester and Remington, the original plan was modified slightly as we were building, okay? And back in, I don't even know what year it was, probably two thousand and nine or ten, HEB, we put in...
HEB Gergen?
Yeah, HEB Gergen. Engineering came up, and there was money put in escrow for completion of the roads, and there's still sixty-eight hundred, I believe, what I think that was the number when they answered. So what this is, the only item I believe that was left was as-built of the road, okay? The plan that we're looking at is the original Brown Engineering plan, Kent Brown went back out there with the original plan, and he's actually redlined this, as-built plans, and it was done back in twenty twelve on the survey, and he restamped these plans as the as-built plans, he redlined it.
Okay.
So he actually surveyed, the red lines are the slight differences in elevations compared to what was on the original plan to be built, okay? So, and nowadays, in this world, if this still existed in the computer, he would simply have taken the original plan, made the modification, stamped it, okay? So instead of going out there and spending a ton of money redlining, you can see how close the elevations, I mean, it's literally just about nothing on most of it. So he's adjusted all these elevations, it's odd by an inch or two, the as-built compared to the original. And this is all three of the original plans for the roads, it takes all Winchester and Remington, okay?
So what you're looking for is confirming that this is the as-built minimum, that's the requirements back in two thousand and...
Yeah, the original was two thousand and five, it was as-built in two thousand and twelve. I think the way...
You're looking for us to confirm that the as-built matches the original approval back in...
Yeah, so in other words, right, you always end up modifying when you do it, all you need to do is sign off, get HEB to sign off on this, and you guys can release the last, you guys still work with HEB still?
No.
Okay, let's...
So I assume after our last conversation, points and time ago, that Josh never reached out to you and scheduled a site visit.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't care if White Mountain does the final one, that's fine with me.
Yeah, well, you and I discussed having HEB do it so that...
If they will.
Because they have all the files in history.
You would hope, yeah.
Well, one thing I know for sure is that this is Mountain Shadows, and it involves paving, so we are definitely going to...
No, it doesn't involve paving.
Well, it's an as-built and paving and, you know, stuff like that, so we are definitely gonna just make sure we got all the i's dotted and the t's crossed on this one.
Yeah, it's still on any of these though, but there is no paving required on any of this.
Alright.
Yeah, you don't use the people, because there isn't, I mean, that wasn't, that was never part of the originals. Yeah, the only thing on this, again, was, the last of the requirements was just pre-stamped as-built.
And I don't doubt you at all.
Yeah, so all we gotta do is find somebody, I mean, we could try HEB again with...
I will call Josh myself, because when I left it for him to contact you, it didn't happen, so, but is there a digital, is that in digital format?
No, that's the problem.
That's why it's redlined.
Right, that's why you redlined it, because to redo this in digital is...
So I'll have to mail it?
Way too much work, right.
Okay.
So I have, this is, I have four, I only have four copies, this is the real one that he's signed, and this is, I believe, three copies here, is that enough for you to send them?
He only needs one to review, so, and I'd rather give him an unsigned.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, these are, these are digital, these are photos copies.
Give them one to review and let us keep one here in case...
Yeah, and I'll keep the original.
Because if he doesn't respond, I'm gonna need to send another one somewhere else.
But again, this is, I think this is down to just the technical, yeah, there's no public caring, less than the rest of these, yeah, it was all done and signed, and all we needed was as-built.
Are you leaving the others with me?
I can leave you these two, I'm just gonna keep that one with me, because this is the one that Kent actually signed.
Excellent.
So, I don't know if he stole, I probably could, but it's been dying.
While we're talking about other things, what we did receive from Fenton, just so it's in the public record, a picture of the gate, which was the last condition on his site plan review for his sand pit, and other than that, he is ready to file for one under one fifty-five B for...
Excavation permit.
Good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Alright, planning board operating budget, I don't think it's gonna be a surprise to anyone that due to numerous applications we've received and that Senator never required additional time on the Yance part, as well as additional legal expenses, that we are going to be over budget. So, we thought it wise to talk about that, we're gonna be over the budget, and to notify this man, representative on the planning board, that we are gonna be over budgeted, and that it is probably gonna be to the tune by the time we're done, without ten thousand dollars, but I had a guess, and we should plan accordingly.
Good guess.
It's a rough guess, but it's probably for you. Ian, does that sound about, the ball, wheelhouse for you?
I think it's a little high, but it's better to go than, I mean, better to come in lower.
And all I can say is, these things happen.
And with the nature of the way we budget municipally, a lot of this cost that we're, that we're carrying on the operating budget, we collect back from the applicants, but it doesn't directly offset. In other words, money comes in, it goes into the general fund, but it doesn't offset the expense in the budget, so, the bottom line of the budget is what we have to work to, and the bottom line is the total budget. So, planning board's over, it's, you know, we have to make sure we have money someplace else to cover that overage.
I think, you know, the two largest portions of, you know, the added costs are going to be the jeep, without, you know, the gentleman who's sitting behind me at these larger meetings, is money well spent, because it will save us money down the line, but they are certainly not cheap by the hour, and then, you know, as we have these more complicated applications, you know, we end up spending more and more time answering emails, responding, fulfilling information requests, and as most people do, money gets paid by the hour, and therefore costs of time board money. So, I wish I could come up with some way to avoid it, but there is...
Well, it's a good problem I have. It's a problem we have because of the level of activity coming to the planning board, and in years when we've had practice with nothing, it's nice to see some activity.
People have spent ten thousand more. And they're part of the town, so... If you guys at the selectmen need a further breakdown of how we expect it to be, we can certainly try to give you a rough outline or a rough estimate, but at this point, if we haven't started to see bills, we're not exactly sure.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
When we send out the plans for review, you take money upfront escrow from the application? How do you do it? How do you deal with it?
It's been so long since we have an escrow.
Are you asking the question...
Third-party review.
That would typically happen, from what I understand from many people, you would know, I would think, that if we're gonna go off a third-party review, that the applicant has to pay for that, okay?
Most of the time, not all the time.
In this case, they agreed to pay for it, okay?
We're talking about Farm Island then?
Farm Island, yeah, this is Farm Island.
Well, because we had one earlier this year that we paid for it, but yeah, okay, so Farm Island.
So do we ask for money from them upfront, put it in escrow, pay through it that way?
That's how we do it.
Okay.
Whenever there's a construction observation agreement, which is what I prepare, the engineer, I include the plan, and I will, I'll provide the construction observation agreement, and before they sign it, they provide me back an amount that they estimate. We, Hertel, perfect example, even though it wasn't a, that's the one that we paid for.
It was Hertel we paid for, yeah.
Yeah, but, um...
It wasn't the state review that was strictly our subdivision to our subdivision.
Correct, but there will be an agreement with the third-party engineer, and we'll collect the money, we'll put it in escrow, I submit it to the treasurer, he puts it in escrow, and then I pull from it as we continue to...
Okay, I suspect they're gonna go hourly on this thing, in many cases, because there's so much documentation, they can't, and they're gonna have to touch it all.
It'll be their choice, they give us the figure, based on their best estimate.
They've asked them, they've emailed questions about that, and I said, "Yes, yes, yes, give us your best proposal, however, you won't see the clean documentation till after September fifth, so you can only go by..." And I told them, "The public, the public documents aren't gonna change much now, you know, you see the, most of the substance right there."
Yeah, I mean, the plans.
Okay, I need to know if I own that occasion, I'm having a conversation with them.
And Matt doesn't need to sign that in a meeting.
What's it, what, what have the cost tip that you've been running?
It depends, some are five thousand, some are fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
It depends on the size of subdivision and the...
Thirty-five hundred, but...
And the extent of the scope of the review.
Do we send the state's information to them also?
Not typically.
Not so...
The state subdivision?
The state side of it, so, you know...
I mean, at that point, this is so heavily reviewed that...
Well, I think that's a question for Justin too, but, you know, if, you're right, so, you know, Jim reviewed it, these guys are gonna review it, these guys corrected, and these guys are gonna review it, Jim will review it again, so, but...
Well, I mean, if there's anything wrong there, somebody will find it.
Yeah, that's for sure.
It will be going through quite thoroughly, you know, at that point.
Okay. Alright, we'll reef it up. On the budget, is there any other changes to, you see that makes any difference for us, or...
Our educational expense will be up a little bit as well, but again, is a good thing, we're people that are attending classes.
So I will, at the next meeting, this, I just wanted to give you an outline of what it looked like last year, it's, I don't know, some of you may not recall the type of memo that I prepared for them, and I tried to explain to the board's document and budget committee exactly, and what Bill was speaking to earlier, there's an in... and what Bill was speaking to earlier, there's an in and an up. And, you know, we take money in, but we don't see it in our budget. And it goes straight to the general fund, so we're going to have to request an increase in tuition reimbursement. Gonna have to request an increase to advertising. No, probably not advertising, I'm sorry, what's the, um... Postage, postage, because it'd be a better notices and stuff. And postage did increase this year. So, and we are gonna have to go over a minute, my salary, and and that's probably about it.
There were some other changes on our plan that we did with it was the company that you went to visit that's doing our our town, um...
LRPC with the master plan update.
What about it?
Did that change, the budget change on that? Did I see a comment in there that was moving around?
Well, last year, it was level funded, we asked for it to be level funded.
Okay.
I'm hoping it's gonna be done and we won't need to ask for more money.
Did they accept the 20%?
No.
They have not responded.
They never responded.
But, for the first time, we're seeing things happen.
No, it's a good move. Yes, if you can get it done, it's complete, it'll be it.
And at this point? I mean, it'd be nice to get that to the point where we can start to have some public input meetings and start moving down those roads on those things.
Yep.
There's nothing-
Get the final draft put together, have public meetings, comment sessions, be able to tweak it, and-
There's nothing particularly earth-shattering in any of the information, other than, you know, what they want to do.
But it is interesting that, and we saw several people refer to the master plan in their comments at the Farm Island public hearing. And people look at that document as the the law, but it's an advisory document. So it's, if it's done correctly, then that becomes the town's roadmap, if you will, going forward as to here's where we are and here's where we see things going, so if we're gonna do these things, then we have to do them. But until it's in the it's, until it's in the zoning and the subdivision rigs, that's the law, so-
That's what I was getting to in our conversation a couple of weeks ago.
We take these things that are objectives and statements in the master plan, and that's, that's a to-do list, if you will, going forward. So that should generate activity toward a particular objective, which is to say it's gonna generate perspective changes to to the zoning rigs. But only town meeting makes that happen.
They were pretty much reading the master plan as ordinance.
Right.
Or regulation.
Right.
I've got a zillion questions on that, can't you just change it? Can we change it?
You can change it at town meeting.
You can do it extra year when you're ready.
Right, that's right.
Or whatever it takes, so.
At the, we had the hearings on the two farms.
And as we know from years of experience, the zoning changes don't get a lot of attention.
That's correct.
Very few people come out to the public hearings, get engaged in the process, ask the questions. Often what happens is people show up on ballot day, they get their ballots, and say, "What's this?", you know, and it's tough to get people engaged at a time to where they can really understand what was involved.
If you don't look at zoning law frequently, who could understand it?
Yep.
I mean, it's-
But some of the things that we've done in the last several years can be explained in a way that helps people to understand why this is happening, or why it's being proposed in a relatively short conversation. But if you just look at it and say, "This is the old wording, this is the new wording", and, you know, "What's the deal?", it's it's not obvious.
I think one of the things we really need to look at when we look at writing zoning, but it's an easy change and I don't think anyone has any objection to it, but it came up when we talked about master plan, is we need to add senior, you know, facilities as permitted in most of the zones as a special exception. Because there's gonna be more and more need for that in this area. And it's a good use, and it provides jobs, and it's very minimal impact. You can put it just about anywhere, and I have one across the street from my house, and believe me, it's-
Going away.
Yeah, unfortunately, but, I mean, it's right now, it's not permitted. You know, somebody would need a variance in order to do it.
Yeah, see, that's, I agree with you. Those places are harmless, they're great, I mean, they're good for the-
They're good for the towns.
And there is a need there, unfortunately, that in the current situation, it just that there's not enough demand for the city to continue to make a go of it.
But somebody may want to.
Right.
And if it's not permitted and they have to go and get a variance.
I agree.
I mean, it's a relatively easy change, you know, to do, it's just, they might wanna add this and they'd use it as a special exception and, you know.
Yeah, it depends on where it goes to. Wolfboro had this big issue going. Somebody did that in a neighborhood, and it really turned out to be a big deal.
Well, they wanted to put it up in-
It was down by Kerry Beach, down-
Yeah.
Kerry Beach, it's supposed to be, up in one of the neighborhoods they have. It turned out to be a really big deal in town.
It was, and also, they wanted to put one in, I can't remember that. What helped it was, but, I mean, it was a big deal about it.
So if you have a neighborhood like Farm Road up there, or you may not wanna look at that, but there's so many other places in town that really-
There's so many places.
Look at the big brew, ah, they had with the transitional housing that they put in right on any old shoe factory there.
On Lander Street?
Yeah, on Lander Street, yeah.
While I had the snit, the cops would call me about four or five times a week.
Yeah.
Well, one thing I know is that baby boomers are all retiring. Most of them like being in this area.
Yep.
And that, it's one of the largest growing industries we have. We're in a second home economy up here. And if there's one business that I could see growing in this area, that would probably be it. So.
I might like a couple of those businesses myself.
Yeah.
Very profitable.
Yeah.
Yep.
You gotta get the house to manage it.
Well, they, I think they're decent paying jobs too.
Yeah, they are.
You got physical therapists in there, you got nurses, you got nurses aides, you got you got everybody in there who'll do that, but I mean, Sugar Hill, imagine how many jobs that creates up there. It's gotta be, it's gotta be 100 high-paying jobs that that place supports.
Just guessing.
And Sugar Hill's not cheap neither.
No, that's nonprofit, isn't it?
But still not cheap.
Is it?
Yeah, I think it's, that's why they did a Huggins Hospital Sugar Hill, is they're under that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but- Canopy of-
It just, it is expensive, but up Sugar Hill, they have a co-op, you know, for their townhouses, which is good for people that buy it, it's like buying regular real estate, pretty much. Values go up with it, you can sell it, you can leave it to the family. It's when you get to the main part up there, that it's, it's a nonprofit, but everybody gets paid pretty well.
I was talking to a member up at Bald Peak, and he was telling me that Bald Peak had purchased about 150 acres across the street from their gatehouse there. And one of their thoughts, I mean, they're kicking around, they bought it because it was, you know, there, it was crossing the gates. But one of the ideas being kicked around is at some point down the line, that might be a nice place that they could have some senior living or something while they're gonna be associated with it.
Their thought process is interesting, because their member base is elderly. At this point, they don't have, they've been for years wanting to get younger people in there. You know, I've sold some properties up in there to some younger people, and they were like, and Chris Colton was there, he was like, "Oh, this is great." And well, go meet with him, you know, do whatever you gotta do, and so they're trying to bring in younger people, but the older people don't definitely wanna let go. But, you know, so that's a nice, nice place, they can come and visit still, they can create another type of of a membership, basically.
Yeah, that was kinda, I think, and I don't know, this is just some of the people up there would think of that, but that was one of the rationale for it.
But it could also help feed their expenses.
Probably.
I mean, that, because it is, it is expensive around it.
Oh, God, can you imagine what that place costs to maintain?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a nice place though.
Oh, it's, I always loved that.
They have the best restaurant in town.
Yeah, love driving there, just look at the grounds.
I know, here to wreck your course.
That was my first job as a busboy up there.
There you go. So you got connections now.
$3.75 an hour.
Yeah. And I'll tell you what, I got paid my first job.
Less than that, here we have one.
Alright, so we know we're gonna be over budget. Any other business anyone has?
I do.
Yeah, I do.
I mean, I just need a motion to have Matt, authorize Matt to sign the renewal of Graymont's letter of credit. It's only a one-year, so every year we do this.
I remember this. Can I have a motion to have the board permit me to sign the letter of credit for Graymont subdivision?
So moved, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Farm Bond.
Farm Bond, thank you, Steve.
Graymont's the owner.
Probably one of the nicest subdivisions we've had.
Yeah, they do. It was a nice job.
Yeah, nice job.
Well, I'll tell you, the one up Farm, the one that went into bankruptcy, that that's-
It's not a job.
That, that, beautiful up there. Oh, worth noting is I did receive a call for the attorney at Merrimack Valley, which if you guys remember is-
I guess.
Subdivision. They have met all their conditions, but we have not received bonding, unless that's changed.
Sunday, yeah.
Still no bonding. He was concerned, um, there, if you guys remember, there was 133 or 35 acres of timberland behind him. Apparently, the owner is exercising his right to log that, and his right-of-way exists through the through the subdivision. The attorney was basically asking for relief from the requirements of paving and roadwork and everything else, and still being allowed to-
For a period of time?
No, he wanted to be able to sell them, you know.
Not do it?
And then, you know, not do it, and it was, it was a little vague. So I did talk to them, and I said, you know, you require, this is a requirement of subdivision, and you're not gonna be relieved from that, I said. And if a logger damages your road that you're put in, even though he has a right-of-way, they are required to make repairs to that. He said, "The logger said it could take up to five years." So I did drive up and I looked, and the logger had two feller bunchers, three gravel skitters, and a slasher, which I think Steve can tell you is probably about three weeks on 130.
Well, it'll take a little longer than that.
But, a fairly quick-
It's not five years.
It's not five years.
I think their problem will be the volume to market their volume, because everybody's on quarter.
Yeah.
The biomass check, you can't just take 27 mugs every day, it's like a deal.
They don't have the requirement for it.
Right.
Yeah, price of lumber's way down.
Well, needless to say, the logger-
That would be him doing part of it, yeah.
The logger definitely looked up like he was showing up, meaning business. So, anyway, that's where we're at.
Not so good for a neighborhood.
Nope, but it's his right, he has right-of-way through there. That's, you know, they were aware of that when they purchased it.
Yeah, right.
They were aware of it when they did this up there. But just so everyone's aware. Anyone else have any?
When do you, when do you present your budget? I mean, at the selectmen's meetings and CIP sent a letter to the selectmen, whether they wanna listen to it or not, but they're looking for budgets, what is it, September, was it by September?
They're looking for capital projects, not budgets. And they've asked for CIP input by, I think it's the 4th of September, something like that, so.
Alright, I wasn't at the last budget meeting.
It's a whole different kettle of fish from operating budgets.
I was just curious, okay, and further, the next meeting with the planning board is September 5th, does that work?
Correct.
Is that here, up on the hill, or down the street?
I don't know yet.
Nobody knows.
Hasn't been determined yet.
Oh, I haven't yet, no.
Oh, it's in Wolfboro, you guys might not like that.
We're trying, we'll have to get permission.
And do we bring a portable PA system this time with us?
We're gonna have to do something different, because that, I did not know that would be there, and it clearly didn't work very well.
No, you almost have to really get up and stand up in front of the crowd, just sound to talk.
Yeah.
Probably more comfortable than trying to talk in one of those, but-
No, it definitely was not the-
Unless somebody knows how to operate it, probably, but-
Is the attorney gonna be there at the next meeting again?
Our attorney?
Yeah. Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So we need to, according to the theory, we did figure out something about us conflict of interest.
Yeah, the last-
I need to get that very quick.
Yeah, we don't know where it's gonna be.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
About to eat, about what?
The conflict of interest that made our-
Oh, I think you should prepare for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be landing.
I can help you with that.
Well, I did some research too. The state, the New Hampshire, this is what, on the first precisely defined comment. This is right here. Conflict of interest requiring disqualification, be found by an official, has a direct personal or procuratory financial interest in the outcome.
Yeah.
We don't. I don't. We still prove it, I mean, even though I'm working for them.
You don't work for them, you're a contractor.
I have an independent contract.
And you have a fiduciary, which tells you, you don't talk about your clients. And even if she talked to you with her clients.
That's correct. No conflict of interest. The same thing on your part.
And he feels that here, but he might wanna be prepared for that, that was the last paragraph that was talked about on this Gmail.
I had that.
Okay.
You gave me that, correct?
Yeah, Ian, last month.
Okay, I have that, yeah, okay. That's what I'll say.
That's good, good.
Okay. Yeah, I did that research to make sure, but I, I I don't wanna create any issues with the town later on.
No, none of us do. It'll come off.